Good evening, welcome to a special edition of Fox 13 News You Decide 2024. Tonight, two candidates will square off in a debate for Seattle City Council's 8th District. Current council member Tanya Wu will take on Alexis Mercedes-Rink for the council's only open seat. Wu was appointed earlier this year after Teresa Moscata was elected to the King County Council. She is a small business owner who previously ran in District 2, but ended up losing. Alexis Mercedes-Rink moved to Seattle to work in public policy. Position 8 is at-large, meaning they're elected by and represent the entire city. The lead moderator for the debate is Fox 13 Seattle's John Hopperstat. Tonight's debate will focus on a variety of topics, including crime, homelessness, and affordability. And now we'll take you live to Seattle Central College for the Seattle City Council debate between Alexis Mercedes-Rink and Tanya Wu.
Welcome to the debate between candidates for Seattle City Council Position 8, coming to you live from the Broadway Performance Hall at Seattle Central College on Capitol Hill. Brought to you by Seattle City Club. With special thanks to presenting sponsors AARP of Washington and Comcast. An appreciation for our event and venue sponsors, our civic sponsors, and premier media partners. With production support from WV Live Street.
And good evening, everyone, and thanks so much for being with us here tonight. I'm John Hopperstat with Fox 13 News. With me tonight are Angela King with KUOW 94.9 FM and Josh Cohen of Cascade PBS. And also, please welcome to the stage here our candidates for Seattle City Council Position 8, Tanya Wu and Alexis Mercedes-Rink. Now, we're going to be asking a range of questions here tonight, including questions submitted by the audience. Tonight's rules, each candidate will have one minute for an opening statement, 45 seconds to answer the initial questions. We will then lead a moderated discussion with 20 seconds for rebuttals or follow-up questions. Finally, we have a 60-second lightning round coming up, and each candidate will end with 60-second closing statements. We do ask our live audience to remain silent from here on out and respectful, no cheers or boos, but you can follow along at home using the hashtag #SeeAlex. Now, we tossed a coin backstage to determine who would have the opening statement here. Alexis, you won. You elected to go first, so Alexis, you have 60 seconds.
Good evening all. My name is Alexis Mercedes-Rink. I'm a renter and someone who goes to work on a bus. I went from waiting tables next to the Space Needle to working on policy at the U-Dub Tower, and I'm running for Seattle City Council to fight for a city that works for all of us and not just the wealthy few. And in my work across communities, I gained a reputation for bringing people together around solutions and making them happen. I got my master's degree at the U-Dub, and I've worked across 39 cities and with over 100 different organizations on the housing and health of our communities. And I was brought to this work because of my upbringing, substance use disorder, prison, and homelessness affected my family. But I was given the tools I needed to heal, thanks to my grandparents, great teachers, and afternoons at the Boys and Girls Club. And I am here today as a living testament to when we invest young people regardless of their beginnings, we can change generations. Division is everywhere, but this is the campaign that is uniting Seattle. We've brought together advocates and the Democratic Party, but most importantly, the majority of voters made it clear in August who they trust to continue uniting Seattle. Thank you.
Okay, and Tanya, you have 60 seconds.
I'm Councilmember Tanya Wu, representing Seattle on the City Council and a proud former student of Seattle Colleges. I took classes right here on this campus. Tonight, my goal is simple, to show the contrast and the difference between my opponent and myself, and how important it is to push our city forward, forward with solutions and real action items. I grew up on Beacon Hill, went to school in North Seattle, and now live in Rainier Valley. I've tackled our city's toughest challenges head-on. I've seen what's happened in Del Ridge and Denny, from Pinehurst to Lake City. And on my short time on the City Council, I've helped civilianize the police department and paid our officers a competitive wage. I expanded the care team, and I made sure and worked to make sure that the King County Homeless Regional Authority was on the right track. Seattle needs leaders dedicated to implementing a more balanced, less ideological approach. We have to move forward. My work speaks for itself, and we'll make progress in every neighborhood.
All right, thank you very much. We want to start off here with public safety and something that is very topical, because it just passed yesterday. City Council took a consequential vote on drug and prostitution zones in Seattle, the idea to target drug dealers, pimps, and Johns, cut down on violence, specifically gun violence in those areas. Tanya, you voted for this. Can you explain your reason behind it? And then Alexis, how do you feel about this issue? Tanya, you go first.
Yes, I am part of a volunteer group, or going four years strong, called Community Watch. We go to 12th and Jackson. We know who are out there. We see them, we see people selling drugs, we see people also carrying guns, and we are afraid. But we also know who are the people who need resources and need help. And so removing the drug sellers away from a situation and allowing resources and for people to heal on 12th and Jackson, which is also well, as well as on King. When it comes to SOAP, which is the Lording prostitution bill, we are targeting pimps and Johns who want to help young people. I have seen young people who were raped, who were attacked and beaten, and were basically controlled by their Johns or their pimps. And so how do we remove them from that situation so that we could do the outreach and get them the resources they need?
Alexis?
Public safety continues to be a huge issue facing our community, and it's the number one thing I hear at the doors. People are not feeling safe going to school or going to their work, and I've been spending time in 911 dispatch and on ride-alongs to further understand our public safety system. But I want to be clear with this, and let's be clear that drawing lines on city maps, and let's be clear that people don't disappear. And while the council member has stated that they're providing resources, we have yet to see additional resources brought into the system to date. Banishment laws have been tried before, and a number of community organizations that have been doing the work alongside folks in these affected areas have weighed in against this, and notably, the ACLU has weighed in against this. And so I think we need to be promising the public comprehensive solutions that truly solve the problem at hand and take quick action to do so.
I just want a quick follow-up. You would have voted against this, this proposal. Okay. You want to rebuttal? Tanya, 20 seconds.
Yes, thank you. So we see in Little Saigon, four years ago, we did not see what's happening now in 12th and Jackson, 100 people spilling out to the streets. People needed resources and help. And so we cannot go back to the failed policies of the last four years. We have to move forward with these new policies that target the people who are doing the most amount of harm to our communities.
Okay, I want to stay with public safety right now, because Seattle saw its 36th homicide in the first six months of the year. The numbers are sky-high compared to before the pandemic. In fact, in 2019, there was just 16 homicides in the first six months in the city of Seattle. So my question to you is, do you consider Seattle a safe place, and what is your top priority to make it safer? Alexis, let's start with you.
We need to be building a public safety system that has a quick response and the right response for given public safety scenarios. I'm proudly endorsed by the Alliance for Gun Responsibility, because they trust in my approach and the policies I put forward on my platform to really get to the root of addressing gun violence in our communities. And so with that, we have been really focused on how do we scale our resources in gun violence protection? And I'm committed to also working with the state legislature to pass common sense gun reform legislation to make sure that we get there, while also working to make sure that we are improving our first responder staffing across the board, from focusing on increased staffing for police, behavioral health, fire, and emergency medical.
All right, Tanya?
So your question is, do I feel like Seattle's a safe place? I think it depends on who you ask. I mean, we have people who are afraid to go to the grocery store. It's a very basic part of our life, but how people adjust and change to avoid certain situations is just really interesting. I believe in a comprehensive solution, which means fully staffing our first responders, our police, our fire, so we can get our call times down, and we will have, be able to take our officers out of patrol and into specialized units like community policing. I also would love to see the expansion of the care team, social workers who are going out, doing the outreach and engagement. I love groups like Lead and Reach, We Live for Care, Urban Family, all these amazing groups that can come together and help. We also need more addiction resources, we need mobile clinics, there's a whole host of things, but it's going to take every one of us to help.
I want to focus in on gun violence here, because that's obviously a major concern. Alexis, you mentioned that, but I want to see if you guys have any specific ideas and proposals to get guns out of the hands of criminals, and specifically, out of the hands of young people. Tanya?
Yes, it's, we see the most amount of crime from a very small group of people, and it's unfortunate how we're seeing younger and younger people get involved. They have dangerous guns that could shoot 100 rounds in a minute. So we need to make sure we have opportunities for our young people to go to ignite their passions, entrepreneurship opportunities, late-night basketball, this is what our young people want. Young people coming out of the pandemic need more resources than ever, and I think getting to the root cause of trying to get our young people into issues where they could make or build something and contribute to the community, rather than going into unstructured gangs or feeling like they have to feel powerful with a gun. How do we make them feel powerful with a pen?
Alexis?
Yeah. I've been personally impacted by gang violence, given that that's, you know, my birth parents actually were involved in a gang when they were very young. So this issue is really near and dear to me and important, and I've been careful and paying attention to what our youth are saying. And it's important to note that there was an opportunity to have $20 million going towards mental health supports going into our schools. That funding was cut in half, and that should be noted. But paired with that, you know, I'm hearing a lot of talk about increasing resources, and yet we're seeing a cut to resources. I support improving and increasing funding for programs such as community passageways, which is currently connecting with students across our high schools across the city. But those organizations need resources.
Great. So Seattle, like many cities in the US, has struggled to hire police officers and meet its goal of refilling SPD's ranks. Will you continue to work on police hiring, and what can you do differently to move the needle on the issue? Alexis, why don't you go first?
I think there's a lot we can do to learn from other industry partners when they're, when we're talking about addressing the needs of our workforce. And given that I was most recently working at the U-Dub, I think the U-Dub is a good example of this. The U-Dub, when working with industry partners such as Microsoft, will work with the legislature to create more enrollment spaces when they want to hire more software engineers. So how are we also building on a more upstream approach, looking at how are we growing our own pool locally and investing in that way? We know we have a national hiring shortage. This is not unique to Seattle. So how are we investing and making sure we invest in the front end, because we want to grow our own pool locally, and homegrown workers tend to stay. So I support those kinds of investments, so we can also make sure that we're hiring officers that kind of have the kind of training and cultural competency and de-escalation so they can appropriately serve our communities.
Thank you. Tanya?
So I think this is one of the biggest differences between myself and my opponent, is that I support the mayor's plan to hire and fully staff our police departments. I also voted for initiatives that include competitive wages. We were, I think, top 20 in the state when it comes to competitive wages, and now we're top 5. I know it's not just about money, but it's also a morale issue. I mean, we did not defund police, we also demoralized police, and 600 officers left the force, we're still 400 short. And so how do we make sure that there are tools and incentives to help police, hiring bonuses, as well as 30 by 30, how do we hire more female officers, more officers that look like us in the community? And so I think things like that are important, as well as different initiatives, like I support the Drug Ordinance, SOP, giving officers the tools they need to be successful and listening to what their needs are, and especially, and not only just policing, but firefighters are experiencing a shortage as well.
Thank you. Tanya, continuing with you, what role should the City Council play in working with the police department? Do you see yourself working alongside the department, or do you see the council more focused on oversight and accountability?
So I believe it's a partnership. I've gone on ride-alongs with North Precinct, West Precinct, South Precinct, and learned a lot. I usually go out at night, between hours of 9:00 to 10:00 to 3:00 AM, to really get to know what our officers are seeing here in the city. And so we walked along the Blade, Third Avenue, I've experimented 12th and Jackson, and just hearing ideas, but also getting out of the police car and talking to community members as well, and hearing what their ideas and seeing what the interactions look like, as well as, I know there, a lot of communities face the problem of overpolicing, underpolicing, but I think it's going to take a partnership from not just police and City Council, but the community as a whole.
Thank you, Alexis.
Absolutely. I want to also note something I think that is really important as it relates to police hiring, is the matter of accountability. And notably, my opponent voted for a Seattle Police Officers Guild contract that did not include improved accountability measures. And I think accountability is a key piece when we're actually talking about hiring and retaining a high-quality law enforcement force, because as the council member mentioned, morale is an issue. And I think by having a police department that has well-known and publicized challenges within its culture, that doesn't do well to also retain positive, good officers that can appropriately serve our communities. And so I've been really committed to making sure that we can have a truly accountable police force as well. And also, to be clear, I do support a number of these hiring measures, and I've been more dedicated to also thinking about how do we reach those.
Thank you.
So just clarification, the union contract that we voted on, how we vote with union bargaining is dictated by the state. And so we, for the contract, voted for retroactive pay and competitive wage increases, as long as, as well as civilization of the police force. Going forward, we're still negotiating, which will be the accountability part. I agree, we need accountability, we need a culture change, and that is what we're going to be talking about forthcoming in the second part of this contract.
I'd like to double back on something that we talked about as it relates to youth crime. Alexis, you've talked about a safety plan that focuses on intervention and diversion programs. Some of these ideas are already in place. What would you introduce that is new to the equation?
I think we also need to be clear that for many of our young people in our communities, they're also struggling with housing, also struggling with having their other basic needs met, and being able to just have a good life in the city as well. And so that is why I've been such a strong proponent for increasing our investments into our communities, including so we can make sure that all of our kiddos and young people in this community are housing secure, are able to get the food and their basic needs met. And so making sure that we're increasing our investments in exactly those areas, while also increasing investments into those prevention organizations who are doing the good work, and while also making sure that we iterate upon and explore new options and new kinds of investments.
Okay. Councilmember Wu?
Could you repeat the question?
The question is, there's been talk about introducing intervention programs, diversion programs for youth. How would you, what new element would you introduce to that equation?
Yes, I believe we need to do more. I supported fully funding the $20 million for youth mental health. I also believe the community is doing such amazing things. In the couple of weeks, I'm announcing a citywide initiative during the budget process to fund community de-escalation teams, very similar to what Community Watch does, where we empower community and neighbors and young people to be able to go to the person who is sleeping in a tent down from their street next to their house. How do we do that outreach and engagement ourselves to get people connected to resources? I do truly believe that it's going to take all of us, you know, to solve or help get us closer to solving this problem. We cannot completely solve homelessness, but we could try.
Okay, we're going to move on to crime and disorder hotspots, and this includes an audience question here. Little Saigon, years ago dubbed the neighborhood that government forgot. Last year, the city put up signs to its tour, illegal street vending, clear sidewalks near 12th and Jackson, and an audience member submitting this question, asking, what more can the city do to help this area and the whole CID be more walkable and livable and have a voice again? And Tanya, we'll start with you.
Yes, so I remember how Little Saigon used to look like four years ago. It was a thriving area where people came from all over the city to shop at its stores, to grocery shop, as well as to walk around safely. And you look at it now, it's changed so much. And so my goal is to get it back to how it used to look four years ago, and that involves a multitude of things. At the beginning of the year, in January, Navigation Center will leave. I'm watching closely on the transition of Navigation Center and its move, as well as something I'm fighting for in the next couple of weeks in the budget process, is how do we get safety ambassadors out to these areas? Because I believe 12th and Jackson and Third Pike and Pine are connected. We can't address one area without addressing the other, so I'll be fighting for that, as well as I know the Little Saigon community is putting together safety initiatives and plans that they would like carried out. And so working very closely with the community there, I think it's going to be of paramount importance. Also--
Okay, I think time's just about up here.
Thank you.
Alexis, what do you say?
Absolutely. I think a focused activation is really needed, but again, needing the resources to be able to do so is also of paramount importance, and I've remiss to be remiss to say if we didn't also talk about the city's looming budget deficit of over $260 million. And so making sure that we are clear that our city is also struggling to be able to fund our basic city services. And so in order to do the kind of focused activation work that I think truly is needed, we can all agree, we want to be able to address the issues that we see in hotspot areas, making sure that we have the resources to be able to do so. I think some, a number of the measures that we would need to bring forward should be developed in partnership with community. I'm mindful of the number of community members that are running businesses and focused in a part of the streets, and so crafting those activations alongside them to make sure we have a good felt presence and we're able to do the work together.
We're going to move on to an issue that the city has declared a public health crisis, city and county. Fentanyl is now the leading cause of death for Americans between the ages of 18 and 45, and in 2023, more than 1,067 people died from fentanyl poisonings and overdoses. What is the best tool the city can offer to combat this epidemic? Alexis, we'll start with you.
This issue is so important to me, just given the way I've seen it have impact in my community and my family and so on. And so making sure that we are increasing our funding and making treatment readily accessible. From the work that I've done in communities and across encampments, I've learned firsthand about the challenges that exist when it comes to accessing treatment, when folks are ready to get onto that path. And so implementing things such as mobile medical treatment and having a clear, comprehensive strategy with our county partners and the state to make sure we're scaling those resources, while also making things like overdose prevention medication widely accessible, so we can make sure we're keeping community members alive.
Thank you. Tanya?
So based on my experience at 12th and Jackson, I've been out there every week for the last four years. I've done Narcan on people, I've done CPR on people, and when I close my eyes at night, I see the eyes of the people I have not saved. I've been on my hands and knees, rounding my kneels, trying to resuscitate people, and it's devastating what fentanyl has done. And so a lot of the people I meet who are on fentanyl display a sense of hopelessness. And so I think it's about making sure we have safety teams, ambassadors, people from community, developing that trust and that connection. Why everyone turns to fentanyl and turns addiction is different, and how do we address these root causes by building trust, by going out there, having social workers there? And when people are ready to move on, that Suboxone, Buprenin is available, and the resources are available to house them, as well as the wraparound services.
Thank you. And as a follow-up, an audience member wants to know if you have specific strategies that the city should implement to combat youth addiction. Tanya, we'll start with you.
Yes, I think it's all about partnerships with public-private groups, community centers, schools especially. There's a lot of things that are happening that a lot of community groups are doing to combat youth fentanyl use. At 12th and Jackson, which happens to be right next to some at Sierra School, I see students coming in and out. I also have stand on 12th and Jackson and seen kids holding skateboards and basketballs walk up from sound transit and are able to buy drugs readily. So things like soda orders that stop people from selling drugs in those areas, not making it readily available, so people are able to find it easily. As well as areas in front of schools where these zones are happening, how do we make sure our schools are safe and kids are able to go in and out in an healthy environment?
Thank you. Alexis?
Right. My opponent just mentioned that soda would stop people from selling drugs, and I just want to be very clear that we're setting a geographic limit in a city where folks can easily just move a couple blocks over outside of the soda zone. So I just want to be very clear about that claim. But when it comes to really combating youth addiction, we also need to really be focused on the fact that why are youth using drugs? And in many cases, for folks, they're struggling with other life circumstances, other kinds of instability in their lives. So really doing that in-reach and connecting across the board is tremendously important, and there are great organizations in our community that need resources and have been clear on the kind of strategies we should be implementing and funding to be able to do so and truly help our youth.
Thank you. And one last drug question. Last year, the City Council passed its measure, bringing the city in line with the state law, making drug possession and public use a gross misdemeanor. An audience member wants to know, do you think this move was effective, and should arresting for drug use continue? Tanya, you can go first.
Yes, really quickly, when we developed the soda zones, we did it based on data, and data over a series of years. So we noticed, based on this data and talking to officers, that a lot of these zones were picked because this is where the concentration of people went to sell and to buy. And so we looked at the data for that. When it comes to drug misdemeanor, I supported that bill, and we have to realize, a lot of these initiatives can do so much as we are staffed to do. I mean, our officers are understaffed, Lead and all the other program like Reach were overwhelmed with people, there's no jail space, and so there isn't much that we could do when it comes to drug ordinance, but it gave a tool for the total toolkit. And you know, not every one of these is a magic potion that will relieve the issue, but all together, it's part of a piece of a large puzzle of comprehensive plan.
It's been nearly 10 years.
Oh, wait, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have to let Alexis first.
I apologize.
Alexis gets her chance.
Oh, well, the council member just said it, there is no jail space. So by increasing efforts to try and criminalize and get people inside, if we don't have the jail space, where are we going to go? And so when we're talking about, also, when we're, we're just getting clear on getting to the root of the issue, putting people in jail doesn't help them recover. And I just want to be very, very clear about that measure. And so this would be something, I'm really focused on making sure that we are getting to the root of the issue and helping people in their recovery, and that means investing in people again, investing in the housing our community desperately needs, investing in easily accessible treatment options for folks, and investing also in a stellar frontline workforce that does the work in walking alongside folks in their path to recovery and stabilization.
My apologies for the interruption. Alexis, you mentioned stability, instability. It's been nearly 10 years since the city of Seattle declared homelessness a crisis. From A to F, what grade would you give the City Council when it comes to how it's addressed the issue, and please explain your grade?
You know, because we have seen so many of our folks, hundreds of our, of our community members die outside, it's hard not to say F, just for the simple fact of that. We continue to see so many of our community members die outside, folks who are actively continuing to be outside, living in tents, living in vehicles. I can commend and appreciate the steps that councils and previous councils have taken to try and address the issue, but it hasn't been enough. And we need to get very, very real about the fact that lives are in the balance and investments need to be made into the housing crisis and all the supportive services to really make sure we're getting to the heart of this.
So not an F, but what grade would you assess? Just, just, I mean, is it, is it a passing grade? Is it?
No, it's a D.
Okay, all right.
Could you repeat the question?
Oh, could you repeat the question?
Yes. From an A to an F, what grade would you give the City Council when it comes to handling the issue of homelessness?
I think we're failing when it comes to the issue of homelessness. I mean, my opponent here wrote the five-year plan for the King County Regional Homeless Authority, a plan that would have costed the city $12 billion. And we could all agree that this organization has not produced any meaningful result. Our point-in-time homeless count is the highest ever. Our city puts in about $130 million to the King County Regional Homeless Authority, and I believe we need a regional approach, but we need to reform and change it and work on the implementation. And so basically, I think that's one of the biggest differences in terms of experience, is, you know, my opponent was part of a failed organization, and I have on-the-ground experience providing aid to our unhoused neighbors. And so the big question is, who would you want running the city?
So how should the city, oh, Alexis, yes, go ahead.
If the council member had read the plan, she would know that the plan doesn't cost $12 billion. In fact, we put together a problem statement because homelessness is a housing issue, and so in order to fully address it, we need to be building the housing that our community desperately needs. And that is why there's a $12 billion figure in there, because developing housing, especially in this city, is tremendously expensive. Everything within the five-year plan can be done within the existing budget.
And we will be addressing the issue of home, I mean, of housing in just a moment, but we need to keep this moving. So quick question for you both. Tanya, how should the city of Seattle handle encampments?
So I, I support the mayor's plan on encampment resolution and making sure that there is housing and shelter for every single person before an encampment resolution happens. I think we could, you know, sweeps are not great. I think we need to rework the model, and I think it has to, you know, deal with making sure social workers are out there and building that trust, building that engagement before an encampment even develops. We see someone in a tent, we should be out there talking to people and trying to get them into housing, trying to get some of them the resources. Many people I have met have been through a broken system, they've been through housing, through the many organizations that KCRJ funds, and have lost trust. And so for those groups of people who refuse shelter and housing-- And so for those groups of people who refuse shelter and housing, we need to develop that trust again to get them to come back inside. That takes these social workers and making sure they're doing the ongoing engagement outreach.
Thank you very much, Alexis.
Sweeps are tremendously traumatizing for many of the folks that are victims of them. We also know, as was mentioned, that we need to build trust in the system. Trust is built when you can rely on your social worker or the case manager that you're working alongside to show up, continue to show up. And the fact of the matter is, many of our frontline staff are not paid wages where they are able to live and remain within the city and often leave these roles. And so we see tremendous turnover, where I've talked to folks who have had 10 different case managers, and they say, why should I trust you that you're going to get me into housing? That's where we see distrust happening. And we know models of encampment resolution that work, the State Ride-Away Initiative works, and it's important to note that this is a different kind of model that builds trust over the course of a month, but also provides a housing resource.
Thank you very much.
Let's talk about housing a little more here and rent control. Housing prices going up, so does rent. City numbers show a 69% increase from 2010 to 2018. So rent control measures have been voted down in the past. We want to know, and some of our audience have asked this as well, what can the council do to make housing more affordable, not just for owners, but for renters as well? Alexis, we'll start with you.
Yes, well, as a renter myself, I feel this one deeply. With that, you know, I think in many ways, we're all feeling it, whether you are a renter or a senior on a fixed income or a young family trying to buy your first house. We don't have the supply to currently meet the need of housing in our community, so we need to be building housing in every neighborhood across our city, while also taking into account that the history of housing development in this city has really concentrated a lot of that housing development in South Seattle, namely in communities of color, and that is fuel displacement. So being able to fully address both our need for our housing supply while also making sure that we're mitigating displacement, we need to invest in affordable homeownership programs, community land trust models, and affordable housing across the board.
Tanya?
Yes, we live in one of the most rent burden cities. The average rent is anywhere from $1,800 to $2,500 a month, and people commute hours to get to Seattle, to work in Seattle. I, the biggest difference between myself and my opponent is that I have built housing, I've built workforce housing where we only charge our tenants a percentage of their income, so no one's forced to pay rent they cannot afford. And I believe that model works, and there's a long waiting list. And that's something I'm working on, is legislation on how do we build more housing for the entire city, more housing of all types, and save trees at the same time. This is not either-or debate, it's and, yes, and. And so basically, I love what a lot of community groups are doing with land trust, Afriktown, Brighton Neighborhood has a co-op model where neighbors are actually able to purchase parts of the block.
Thanks.
We're going to stick with housing and get a little wonkier here for a second. You've both said in campaign materials that you want to address housing through zoning and the comprehensive plan. How does the city's current housing proposal fall short, and what would you do to increase housing in the city? Tanya, you go first.
Yes, the mayor's plan will actually drop after budget, but looking at the rough draft of a plan, we need to definitely build more. And we also need to make sure that it's equitable. By looking at the gentrification and displacement plan as well, I've heard that that was taken out, and I'm fighting to get that put back in. Coming from a community that's known as the most endangered neighborhood in America, fighting gentrification and displacement is really important, and that's something I plan to do going forward. At the same time, being able to build housing and especially workforce housing, affordable housing, which is what is most needed throughout the entire city in our transit zones. And so I've been to all the land use, comprehensive plan meetings and listened to people and what their suggestions are, and then now we have to look at how we implement it.
Thanks.
And Alexis?
Right, the comprehensive plan in its draft form has not gone far enough to plan for the amount of density that we need across the city to accommodate for all of our new neighbors. And I think we should be also excited about a lot of our new neighbors. Folks are coming to Seattle because they love the city just the same way that we all do. And so making sure we have a comprehensive plan that has planning for the housing that we need. I really align with what the Complete Communities Coalition has put forward, accounting for having more neighborhood centers in our communities, more transit-oriented development, but also a meaningful anti-displacement strategy, which definitely was missing from the previous plan. And as in my work with communities that are working on anti-displacement, we also need to be clear that this will require resources, but that is a worthy investment we need to prioritize.
As a 20-second follow-up for both of you, where should the city be building housing? Where should the housing go? Alexis, you go first.
Absolutely. In communities that historically have not had the density that communities of color have brought in, so making sure that we are building, we are building more housing and increasing density in northern parts of Seattle, across communities, again, that have been primarily zoned for single-family housing.
Thank you, and Tanya?
Everywhere, and every neighborhood is different. Because what would need it in Del Ridge is different in the historic district of Ballard or Chinatown International District or in the Central District, is how do we meaningfully build with community inputs based on that neighborhood? I believe every neighborhood is different, and we really need to listen and be able to overall build more.
Well, you say every neighborhood is different, so let's hone in on one specifically, the Rainier Valley. Tanya, what are some of the big issues facing that community in your opinion? And this is specifically coming from an audience member, how would you improve the quality of life?
Yes, I think some of the bigger things that are happening there is traffic safety. Rainier Avenue is, has not been, it's a really deadly street. And so how do we look at traffic calming measures through the built environment? I think it's going to be important, more lighting. Also, looking at safety, public safety, basically, is what I hear the most, knocking on thousands of doors this past year. People don't feel safe in their neighborhoods, they don't feel safe going to the grocery store. And so how do we build back up that trust and that perception of safety? And that includes a whole host of different measures. Another thing I'm hearing about is people are concerned about encampments, about tenting. I believe it's inhumane to allow someone to die in a tent, and many communities have very similar concerns, so how are we doing that outreach?
And that's time. Thank you very much. Alexis, your response, Rainier Valley?
Yeah, absolutely. We know that we have dangerous arterials, pardon me, that we see, we have seen folks who have lost their lives on. So being able to address street safety is tremendously important, also including in there the need to be building in some bike infrastructure as well, as we do see safety for, unsafety for bicyclists. So really building on like, how are we improving our street safety, but then also addressing the tremendous housing needs? We need to be improving affordability, but also creating more avenues for homeownership opportunity, while also keeping a clear eye on keeping healthy housing too, making sure that we are addressing the infrastructure needs and making sure that people who are renting within Rainier Valley are in healthy housing. And lastly, community safety, of course, we have seen too much gun violence this year.
All right, let's talk about the budget, and it's not a pretty picture, as you both likely know here. The city's facing a huge budget hole of $260 million. The mayor asking agencies what it would look like to cut 20% from their budget. So the question to you would be, are there agencies you believe should get less? And what would you cut first? Alexis, we'll start with you.
Well, as the only person on this stage that has worked extensively in large public budgets, namely with the University of Washington, which has a $10 billion budget, I'm fairly experienced in working on balancing departmental needs and academic unit priorities to make sure that we are putting forward and having an accurately represented budget. And so what I bring to the table in this discussion is making sure that as we are addressing budget challenges in future years, I don't think the election of this position would allow me to vote on a budget, but to that end, making sure that we are improving fiscal health for the city, making sure that we are maintaining fiscal health so we can have strong bond ratings, while also being clear-eyed about the need for additional public resources.
Just want to follow up you there. Are there agencies, though, that you believe should get less funding? Are there agencies that should be cut?
Sorry, I lost the part of that question. I just would say, yeah, specifically, I mean, as a budget professional, you know, I only have as much working knowledge about the current workings of the budget as the public does. I know the council has much more insight into that, and I'd be bringing a lot of thorough questions to really consider and evaluate the options alongside departments and with community, to figure out what should be, what we should be informing our cuts based on.
Okay. Tanya?
Yes, so my opponent is absolutely correct. She's the only one who has dealt with large public budgets. I've dealt with large private budgets. Building, of course, housing is a large budget, as well as a small business owner, having to deal with budgets. We can't always ask for additional funding when trying to balance our budgets, and budgets are really tight, not just for small businesses, but also for people trying to get food on the table. And so my approach to this budget, when you ask like, what should be cut? My approach is, as a small business owner, I want to know everything. And the mayor hands down his budget next week, and as city council, we are the oversight. We will definitely be looking in details and taking two months to really look closely at all the fine details and looking at the city departments. And keeping our essential services is of paramount importance. We experience high inflation, and this is a table that has been set for us. A lot of the issues we're seeing is from previous city councils, and so how do we?
I do want to ask you both a couple of follow-up questions here, and you're just going to get 20 seconds, but how would you balance a budget? Would you begin by cutting programs or try to raise new revenue? Tanya, go ahead and go first.
Yes, as I mentioned, how I approach the budget is as a small business owner's perspective. Asking for more taxes is, should be a last resort, not the first resort. We need long-term solutions, not short-term fixes. And so how I approach this budget is, you know, as I said, keeping essential surfaces and making sure that the affordability is there, especially for people. We just passed the housing levy, now the transportation plan, next year it's libraries. And so we also have SBU rates going up, as well as sales city light rates going up. So how do we make sure that, you know, these dollars add up for people? And how do we keep it as low as possible? And so?
And let me get to Alexis on this. Would you cut programs or would you try to raise new revenue?
I think we need to try and raise new revenue, especially given the fact that, and I want to be clear also about what kind of revenue, I'm talking about progressive revenue and making sure that corporations in the ultra wealthy that live in this community are paying what they owe. The biggest thing I'm hearing from community right now is the need and desire for increased investment, increased investment in our young people, in treatment options and housing. So making sure we're representing exactly that. We need to be increasing our investments in those areas and making sure that corporations are paying their fair share is a key part of that.
Okay. One more follow-up question, I believe we're going to go 20 seconds each here, so these are quick. One audience member wants to know, how would you lower taxes? Is there any way to provide relief for people right now who feel overburdened in the city? Alexis?
Absolutely. It's important to note that Washington State has an upside on tax code. Our lower-income community members are paying disproportionately more in taxes into the system. So being able to take steps to remedy that is tremendously important, making sure that we are addressing and really looking at progressive revenue options instead first, and while looking at how we can reduce our reliance on things like sales tax and property tax to fund our city services.
And Tanya, 20 seconds.
I really want to address something earlier that was said. So a lot of our progressive revenue options are limited by the state, the progressive task force identified 12, 10 were illegal. And so I'm willing to go before the state legislature to advocate for progressive taxes, but especially for our schools. I went to Tops School last night to talk to many of the parents, fighting to keep their schools open, and yes, we need to really prioritize children.
Okay.
Tanya, you mentioned the transportation levy, the vote that's coming up this November. It's a $1.55 billion plan, would cost the average Seattle homeowner about $500 a year. The levy lists a lot of specific projects, and it also gives the council and transportation officials flexibility when it comes to determining how that money is spent. What are your top priorities? If you had to rank them, what would be your top three priorities in terms of using the money to address concerns about the city?
Well, I think my top would be the one that's hardest is Vision Zero. How do we get our traffic deaths down to zero? And it's going to take a very comprehensive approach. My second one would be building out more sidewalks. How do we make it accessible? There is a list of missing sidewalks, not only in District 2, but also District 5, and it's an equity issue. How do we make sure that it's safer for people to travel, to walk to schools, to get to the transit center? And also, we have a lot of aging infrastructure, a lot of disrepair when it comes to our bridges and our roads, that could be quite dangerous. And so I think, you know, we need to prioritize things that deal with life safety, most importantly. Also, looking at the built environment, especially on Aurora Avenue North, I think it's all connected to public safety. And so how we address one thing ripples to other things as well.
Thank you. Alexis?
Absolutely. I want to make sure that we work alongside and also determining where should our first investment areas be in the transportation, in the transportation levy. I do agree that we should be increasing our investment to make sure that we are prioritizing street safety. It's unacceptable that we have seen the number of traffic deaths that we have, but also investing in increasing our public transportation options. So we have a public transit system that encourages people getting into buses, getting in on their bikes, and making sure that we have a system that is accessible and connected to the city and also really safe.
All right. The new levy raises money through property taxes, but some academics argue most of those taxes will eventually be passed on to renters in the form of rent increases. Are property taxes the best way to fund government services? Alexis, we'll start with you.
Absolutely. As stated before, you know, because of the Washington State Constitution and the limited options, you know, not being able to impose a income tax, that does give municipalities limited options on how we can pursue and fund our city services. Property tax is one of the options that we have, but we have so many of them to fund our city services because of the limitations that we have. I do stand by and think that we should be creating more parity in our state, a more fair tax system, to make sure that we're funding our city services, which is why I've been such a strong proponent for progressive revenue. I keep mentioning that Washington State is the second most regressive tax code. The only state with a more regressive tax code is Florida, and Washington is not Florida. We are not Florida in policy and how we invest in our values. And so standing by making sure that we have corporations pay what they owe.
Tanya, your response?
Yes, I knocked on doors throughout the city and talked to a lot of seniors who come to the door. They don't know how they're going to pay their property taxes. It goes up every year. And plus, all the requirements to turn to green energy, going from gas to electric, all these costs are adding up, and many people on fixed income can't pay it. And so I think a lot of it, we'll have to look at, how do we make sure that people are aware of city resources? There are tax, I guess, exemption or rebate programs within the city, and how do we make sure our seniors, people who do not speak English, have access to these resources? Most of the resources are set for people who make between 70% to 80% AMI, people on fixed income. And I do a lot of, I guess, educating and promoting of these resources, might talk to people at the doors, but yes, that is a huge concern.
Okay, that is time. Thank you.
Great. And one quick transit question for you. Would you support building the First Avenue Streetcar to connect the South Lake Union and First Hill lines? I believe, Tanya, you go first.
Yes, I would support it, but finding the funding is the most difficult thing. So I think it would depend on the funding source. But yes, I think, you know, having more transit options would be amazing.
Great. Sorry, it was a full-length question. You'd have 30 more seconds to talk about transit if you would like.
Oh, yes. Okay, no problem. So yes, we need more transit options. I'm so excited to see that now ST1 goes all the way to Linwood. I'm excited to see ST3 going, so we have more than Line 1 currently. I also think we also need to look at metro buses and all other options, the street car. It's part of our healthy ecosystem, and we could do better. I hear a lot of people, a lot of closures, people want more transit, so let's do it.
Terrific, thank you. And Alexis?
I love that I get so much time to talk about transit. I don't own a car, so I truly rely on our, having a strong bus infrastructure, making sure that we also are investing to make sure we have alternative modes of transportation, making sure that we have safe bike lanes. But also, again, really excited to see the opening of the Linwood Station for Light Rail. I know that's changed a lot of folks' commutes, which is tremendously exciting. To answer the initial question, though, related to the streetcar, yes, absolutely. I wish it happened yesterday, and making sure that we can invest to make it happen. But with that, I'm also excited when we think about the future of transit in this city. Right now, vehicle emissions are the number one source of emissions in our city. So anything that we can be doing to invest in this way to get people out of their cars and into our buses is a priority to me.
Okay, thank you. Let's talk about small business real quickly here. Many, as you know, many small businesses are still struggling, COVID-19 pandemic, business losses. It's a city that's increasingly expensive to operate in, not just live in. So audience members want to ask you what the council can do to help them. And Alexis, let's go with you first.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Well, just the small businesses are struggling out there. There's a lot of red tape they have to go to. It's increasingly expensive to operate in, so audience wants to know, if you're a city council member, what can you do to help small business?
Absolutely. I've been doing canvases of neighborhoods across the city, just walking in and saying hi to our small businesses and trying to, to connect and understand what are the challenges in running a small business right now in the city? And there, there are a number. There are a number of businesses, particularly immigrant-owned businesses, that are running at very thin margins, and any kind of major changes could mean to them going under. And of course, they hold a number of cultural, paramount cultural importance to so many communities in this city. So I really would explore ways that the Office of Economic Development can take steps to lower the cost for a number of these businesses to do their business. So looking at things like commercial rent stabilization and other kinds of programs, grant programs, to make sure that we can keep a number of these businesses open while also not compromising on workers' wages.
And Tanya?
I am a small business owner. My family owns a neighborhood restaurant in the heart of the Chinatown International District, and we recognize it's tough. We know six restaurants that are going to close at the end of the year, they're for sale right now, within a block radius of us. And so businesses are really struggling. And I think a big part of that is public safety, broken windows, break-ins, having our employees being, coming in with bloody noses is, is a lot. And so I think looking at public safety would be helpful, a factor, the cost of doing business is getting too high. Another important factor looks into people building more businesses, entrepreneurships, how do we fill up our empty storefronts with a very similar program we did a few years ago with the Empty Storefront Program, getting people into these spaces, and also helping with, you know, making their permits faster so they could do their tenant improvements and be able to open up quickly. It took a year to two years to get permits.
Thank you.
Let's talk success. Given that the winning candidate will have to run again in 2025, what does a successful term look like for you? I forget who goes first. I believe, Tanya, you go first.
Yeah, so I'm doing the exact same thing right now. I, I'm eight months in, having to run a campaign, and it is quite a learning curve, like, learning the different processes of city government and building and collaborating with all the council members. I'm proudly endorsed by all council members except for one, and we are all in person chatting about different ideas and legislation that we want to work on. And so, based on my experience with building housing, my experience in a small business, running a community public safety group, these are all things that I'm working on. I'm looking at legislation that will allow us to be able to build more housing based on my experiences. I'm looking at initiatives that will empower communities into helping their public safety. Also, looking at initiatives where, you know, we're helping our small businesses and we're saving trees.
That's time, thank you. Alexis?
Yeah, when I think about a successful term, I think about getting things done. And that is something that unfortunately this council has struggled to do in its eight months while, while in office. This is a council that has voted down affordable housing legislation, that has approved a SPOG contract without increased accountability measures, that just voted to re-implement banishment policy that historically has not worked, has also voted, has also added funding, added to the budget deficit. And what I'm able to offer in this moment is my experience having brought people together across the ideological spectrum to solve problems. I'm interested in making sure that we address and put forward common sense legislation that addresses the core issues of affordability and safety in our communities, that is what Seattleites want.
Okay, let's talk sports. Oh, you want to, you had a rebuttal?
Yes.
Tanya's 20 seconds.
So, I think this is the biggest difference, is that my opponent advocates for all the policies in the last four years that have brought us to where we are today. And so we have to move forward, we have to look at how we could, public safety and do that differently from what we've done in the past. I always talk about Little Saigon and how it looked four years ago and how it looked today, and those are all the years of failed policy that has affected or marginalized and most vulnerable communities the most. And that's my goal in this council is to help bring that community back.
Thank you, that's good. Alexis, 20 seconds, rebuttal.
Absolutely. I think what's important to note is, you know, I'm, I would say that I'm interested in, in solving problems. I have a track record of being able to address and bring people together around a table, while my opponent is characterizing me in a way that I, I have definitely not brought forward on the campaign. Our campaign has been the one uniting our communities, not bringing angry people to City Hall to give public comment for hours and hours at a time, just to be unheard.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to hit the lightning round now, and I believe you two have paddles up there with yes or no, you can use those, or some of these questions will require a little bit of an answer, just one or two words. And this is kind of a fun little round here. So we're going to start with, what is your favorite Seattle spot, not famous with tourists, kind of a hidden gem? Tanya?
I love the Fremont Troll, but I think that's debatable, whether it's famous to tourists or not, it's kind of off the beaten track. And I love the how weird and different the troll is.
Okay, Alexis?
There's a little stairwell in the Montlake area, a little random set of stairs that is a part of my run. It's my favorite part of the run, if anybody knows what I'm talking about, it kind of leads up to Roanoke. It is this gorgeous little like green canopy, and that's my favorite part of my morning run.
Yes or no, will the Seahawks win the Super Bowl within the next five years?
Yes.
Yes, I think there's only one right answer to that.
Will the Mariners win the World Series in the next 20 years?
Oh gosh, yes.
Optimistic.
And we will get the Sonics back.
Yes.
Quick answers, where do you feel safest in Seattle? Tanya, we'll start with you.
Oh, with my family. I don't think there is a particular location, but I know I feel safe when I have the people I love around me, and, and I define safety as mental, physical, safety.
Okay, thank you, Alexis.
My favorite cafe, Boon Buna, on 12th and East Cherry.
You can only choose one, Pearl Jam, Nirvana, Alice in Chains, or Soundgarden?
Soundgarden.
Nirvana.
Nirvana? You got the answer right, Tanya, it is Nirvana. Now it's time for our closing statements, you'll have 67, 60 seconds, and Tanya, you go first.
So we need leaders who are willing to be realistic about on-the-ground approaches and not double down on the failed approaches that have led us to where we are today. We have to move forward. We live in a world-class city and we deserve world-class services. We've come a long way, but we still have so much more to go. As a council member, my priorities include public safety, affordability, and making sure that King County Regional Homeless Authority is on the right track. We cannot allow our past mistakes that dictate our future. So, my work speaks for itself, and I believe the city is in a better place than how it was when I started eight years ago, but we cannot afford to let go of our, of our progress that we're making. I am Councilmember Tanya Wu, and I ask for your vote to make Seattle affordable, compassionate, and a safe place to live.
And Alexis, you have 60 seconds.
Thank you again for the opportunity to be here tonight. As I hope you have heard, I bring experience and the ability to unify folks across the spectrum. I got my master's degree at the UW, and since then I've championed agreements with unanimous votes between five different city councils, uniting our North King County neighbors. I've led the development of a county-wide five-year plan to address homelessness. I established and directed our region's first subregional severe weather response system and protocols because climate change is here and now and requires us to act. And I've worked in UW's budget office, working across the university and medical system to balance priorities in a $10 billion budget.